I just spent the last forty-five minutes breaking waters, so that's fun.
That's, I don't know, that's one of the worst things I ever have to do. But pays off, though. Oh, you're talking about watering deer. I was talking about breaking water to shoot geese.
No, I was talking about breaking water so they could drink.
Yeah, that's no fun.
You don't like ice cubes?
It's, is, well, this is the worst it's ever been, but like, just from this afternoon, there was two inch, uh, two inches of ice on top and probably inch and a half down the sides.
I got worse.
Yeah, wait till minus fifteen on Saturday.
Hmm, is that in the forecast?
Yup.
Oh, wow.
Last one I saw.
Welcome to the Arctic.
The, the comment I heard was, thank God for global warming.
Yup.
Do we have an idea how many we were gonna have tonight?
Um, Judy and Jeanette confirmed, Tyler confirmed, so.
Oh, we had all of them, but, but, uh, Judy.
All of them but Judy?
Yes.
I had, I had everybody but Chad.
I emailed you a couple days ago, Jolie, that I was gonna be in.
Did you?
I thought so.
I didn't see anything.
So you think, so you think Jake and Judy will be on here?
Hmm, I, I know that I got confirmation from Tyler, Jeanette, and Judy.
Yeah, Friday, Friday I did, Jolie, so, sorry if you missed it.
I'll have to look.
But no Jake?
Yeah, I know Jake.
Well, we have enough for a quorum, should we get started?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, I, I have past six, so we'll go ahead and get started. Um, this is the February eighth, twenty-twenty-one, meeting of the Shawnee County Planning Commission. Um, we're going to skip reading, the reading of the hearing procedure tonight, we don't have any hearing, uh, worthy cases. Uh, so we're gonna jump right into roll call and declaration of quorum.
Okay, Judy Muller, Tyler Tenbrink, Josh Greening.
Here.
Brian Aubert.
Here.
Jeanette Johnson.
Here.
Chad Depper Schmidt.
Here.
With three members present, there is a quorum?
There's five.
Who, who else is there that I'm not seeing?
If you bring up the full participation, uh, list, there's myself, uh, Chad, Jeanette, Josh Greening, and Tyler Tenbrink.
Oh, okay, see, I missed those two, Jeanette and Tyler. So with five members present, there is a quorum, sorry?
Yep. Oh, it, it had me tricked too, though I pulled up the full participants', uh, list. Um, okay, we have, in our packet, we had minutes from January eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. Um, that's a small typo there in the, in the, uh, agenda, but I don't think that really matters. Um, if everybody's had a chance to review that, I'd hear a motion to approve.
This is Jeanette, I move to approve.
Thank you, Jeanette. Second? Uh, I'll second him. A motion to approve minutes by Jeanette, seconded by Brian, uh, roll call vote.
Brian Aubert.
Yes.
Jeanette Johnson.
Yes.
Tyler Tenbrink.
Yes.
Judy Muller, Chad Depper Schmidt.
Yes.
Josh Greening.
Yes.
With the majority in favor, the January eleventh, twenty-twenty-one minutes are approved.
Hey, thank you. Um, are there any communications that we need to discuss? Randy?
None from staff.
Okay, any expertise, communications from members of the commission? No, um, declaration of conflict of interest? No?
Nope.
Um, okay, the next item on our agenda is election of officers. Um, so we're needing to do this at, at some point, um, Randy, you were mentioning that there's, um, possibly a slight issue with one of our members still haven't been confirmed.
Right, uh, Chad was, Chad was confirmed, uh, I think January eighteenth, and they decided to, uh, to, uh, open up the, up the, um, candidate pool for, for Jake's position, because he was an at-large appointee, so, uh, they were taking the applications, uh, through February fifth. We've passed that date, and at some point here, presumably in the next coming weeks, they will hopefully either reappoint Jake, or they will appoint somebody else. I'm not sure what they're, what they're, uh, looking to do there, but, uh, that's where we're at in the process, so because of that, you may want to, uh, defer again, one more month on officers until they've made their decision.
Okay, I have no problem with deferring, but I wanted to open up to the rest of the commission, um, to get a couple more, um, people's opinion on whether to defer, or if we should move ahead and elect new officers.
I would say defer, just because Jake's the vice chair, so in case he does come back, I think he'd be the logical choice for chair, but.
Okay.
This is Tyler, I, I would prefer that we defer.
Okay, um, does anybody, oh, okay, I will hear a motion to defer election of officer, officers then?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Chad made a motion. Was that Josh or Tyler?
Josh, second.
Okay, Josh seconded. Uh, so difficult to do voice votes, so let's do a roll call vote on that.
Tyler Tenbrink.
Yes.
Chad Depper Schmidt.
Yes.
Brian Aubert.
Yes.
Josh Greening.
Yes.
Judy Muller, Jeanette Johnson.
Yes.
With the majority in favor, the election of officers is deferred until the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Jolie. Um, okay, uh, we don't have any, um, zoning or subdivision items tonight, um, so our main subject of tonight's meeting is the work session discussing the zoning regulations, Randy, take it away.
Hey. Tell me if you see my screen when it comes up here.
We see it?
Okay, you got the draft zoning regulations?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh, it just switched to, uh, your email, there you go.
Oh, I can move my stuff around my desktop, but I guess it can't.
I think if, if you share program instead of screen, should be able to.
Okay. Uh, this is the presentation of, uh, of, of zoning regulations, where they stand now after one year of work, uh, by, by staff and by, by the commission. I'm gonna just give you an overview of the entire, entirety of the ordinance, I would appreciate, uh, if possible, if you can, uh, defer your comments, and, either until the end or until the next time we meet, because I have a lot to get through, I have about thirty, about thirty slides, I wanna make sure I get through them all, so we can close this meeting by around seven, or a little bit after seven if we can, and, uh, I wanna make sure I, I cover everything, so with that, with that, I have actually, I have twenty-seven slides, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna hop right into it. Uh, I'm gonna cover it from the beginning, 'cause we have, we have some new members, so I'm gonna present it like you've never heard it before. Uh, the purpose of the rewrite, uh, the zoning regulations we presently have been enforcing for the last thirty, or actually, we could say thirty-eight years, since nineteen ninety-two, were written by the city of Topeka, and they are primarily geared toward urban development within the city of Topeka. So when you look at those regulations, you don't see a lot of the uses that are customary in the county, you see certain regulations that are, that are, that are, you can tell that they're ideally suited for urban development and not for the kind of development that happens in the county. So we needed to update the ordinance to reflect a, a truly county ordinance, uh, needed to streamline some things, enhance, uh, enhance the ordinance to reflect the needs of the county, uh, there's a lot of missing information in, in the current ordinance, so we need to, we need to fill in those, those blanks, and we need to make sure that the ordinance is basically an implementation tool of your comprehensive plan that was adopted two years ago, and last but not least, we need to comply with state, federal statutes that are applicable to different uses and procedures, and also with court decisions that have happened in the last thirty-eight years that affect what we do in the zoning ordinance. So that's why we're doing the rewrite, we're trying to get it right for the county. An overview of what we're gonna be talking about, the first twenty-six chapters, or articles of the ordinance, you've already, you've, we've already gone through, and you've been working through those with the staff since, I guess, January last year, uh, we've, we've largely completed one through twenty-six. We wanna summarize the work that staff's done in the background on articles twenty-six, or twenty-seven through thirty-six, and spotlight the significant changes that are, that are proposed, and give you a preview of the entirety of the initial draft of the ordinance, so you can see it all filing, uh, in one sitting, from finish, from start to finish. So, are the one, this is largely a legalese type of an ordinance, we, uh, we needed to establish the, the underpinnings of the ordinance, the legal basis, we've done that, we're not changing, we're not changing any zoning districts or the zoning map. Uh, we have, we have greatly clarified how we, uh, resolve any conflicts, when there's a zoning map boundary conflict, uh, that's, that's spelled out now, so that there's no, no ambiguity, where if somebody says my boundary is here, you're showing it here on your map, or if somebody dictates a, a right-of-way or an easement, um, where does the boundary go? That's all, that's all now clarified in, in this ordinance, uh, as drafted, as are all the meanings of the words, abbreviations, and acronyms that are in the ordinance that we're proposing today, so, uh, this is a real legalese type of chapter, a lot of boilerplate language, nothing exciting there, but it all, it all needs to be in there and have a, have a truly legitimate zoning ordinance. The land use table, uh, you have worked through all these with us, uh, we appreciate everything you've done, uh, that was, like I said, that was the meat of the work, as you can see, we amended the first twenty-six, uh, twenty-five chapters of the ordinance, and that's, that was, that was going through this process, that's how we got there. Uh, since, since we talked last, uh, I, I have added one section, uh, that the county counselor asked me to, uh, to look at a couple of things, uh, regarding fireworks, and, uh, there were some issues that, that came up at the end of the year regarding shipping containers and, uh, other equipment being repurposed. So, uh, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna start right there at that point and show you what is new in the, in the land use tables. Uh, we've worked through table, uh, two oh one, point zero one, zero two, three, and four, nothing's changed here, zero five is a new table. Um, starting at the top, we have temporary fireworks sale, uh, we have a separate ordinance, uh, as part of the city, part of this, part of the county code that covers this. What I wanted to do here is I wanted to include it in the land use table and reference, reference the, the, the appropriate language in the county code that speaks to fireworks, to temporary fireworks sales, those are, happened during, during the end of, end of June and first part of July, around, around July fourth. So we put that in here, so a person would know that, that it's a temporary use that the county commission is required to authorize, and decided the chapter and verse where, uh, that legal basis comes from, so we, we thought, uh, a casual user might wanna see that in this land use table, so we put there fireworks displays, same thing, um, the procedure, procedures, uh, that have been clarified by the county counselor and, uh, and other staff, is that we, we want, that the county, the county commission wants the, uh, the fire district to first give a review of any fireworks displays, so that'd be like, if, if I'm a, if I'm a high school and I wanna shoot out fireworks for an event, I would come before the fire district and clarify with them what my, what their requirements are, and then I would take, then I would take my application to the township, and the township would have the right to, uh, make a recommendation, to vote up or down, to, to allow it or not. Um, then from the commit, from the township, it goes through the county commission, and the commission then would have the right to vote it up or down, uh, and impose any kind of conditions, we want, we just wanted those two clear, one of those two uses clarified, because, uh, on the fireworks display especially, there is no formal process, uh, for how the, for how the procedure is, being given those approved, the, it's kind of an unwritten thing that we wanted to, uh, quantify in this table, and, and we have additional regulations, and you can see, uh, check, section twenty-six, eight, and nine, uh, will take you to the, uh, appropriate section in the, and, and that's what we're gonna still tell you what you need to do in more, in more detail. Shipping containers, um, I'm gonna, what's happened is that we've had a lot of people who wanted to take containers and, and throw them in their backyard, or somewhere on their property. We have people who wanted, wanted to live in the things, uh, whether it has a, so we, we have, we have accessory uses of the containers, we have primary uses of the containers, uh, and even temporary uses of the other containers. So what we wanted to do is clarify each one of those categories, and also throw in repurposed equipment, uh, you see, when you, when you go into a lot of counties, you go up into the boon docks, you see a lot of cabooses, and train cars, and other things that are, that have been converted into accessory uses, or even primary uses. So, for, uh, for security's sake, I decided to, to take on all, all five of those, uh, different uses. Uh, in this chart right here, um, if you look at this thing, if somebody wants to use a container as an accessory use, we allow that in the RA, in R one, uh, as proposed here, there are conditions in section twenty-six-ten that, that, uh, describe where those need to go, and, uh, different things about how they're to be used, how many of them, where they're located, and so forth. The repurposed equipment, we called it out, so that we could, we could expressly prohibit it. If somebody wants to dig a, dig a hole and put a, and put a train car in there and live subterranean, they can do that, but, but if the, if the use is gonna be above the ground, uh, where it's, where someone's living at a, or, or a used car, or RV, I mean, not RV, but a, like a, a mobile home that's being repurposed into a primary, to a primary residence, we expressly prohibit those, uh, just like we do mobile homes. Uh, so whether it's an accessory use on, um, on, uh, up here, or, or my, let me see my cursor, up here, uh, as it's, as an accessory use, or down here, as repurposed equipment, as a primary use, we expressly don't allow those, uh, by this table. The, uh, the oddity is the primary, is the primary uses, and it is the primary uses, uh, here's what people are doing, uh, we had this happen at a county recently. Well, actually, I got it later than, I got it later in my, in my presentation, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip ahead and show you the picture so that I can close this topic. Here's what people are dealing with, this, this, they're shipping containers, they're taking a shipping container, and you see on the back of the truck, or a train, or it goes on a, on a cargo ship sailing across the ocean, uh, these things are usually twelve by, twelve feet wide by forty feet in length, some of it, some of them are half sizes, uh, but this is the standard car you see on a, a container on a truck, or a train, and what people are doing, uh, we, we have, we have one instance in the county where people are doing this, and it didn't take off all of the, uh, they didn't do anything to the car, so it still says, it still says, uh, China Shipping, or whatever it says on the, on the, on the side of the container, and all the labels are still on it, and the container is, is, is beat up, repainted, different things, looks kinda like what you, what you see in this picture here. Other people would like to take these things and build a, and, and combine them into a nice house, like you see in the, in the sample design. What, what, what I, what I was trying to do is, by allowing these in the RA one, and in the RR one, just allow somebody by conditional use permit to do something like what you see in, in the sample design, where they, they put it on a, on a pier and beam foundation, they, they repaint it, they took off all the labels and all the junk that makes it look like a shipping container, and, uh, and decorated it with windows and a gable roof, so that it looks more like a home, and, uh, someone owns acreage, five, ten, twenty acres or more, and I don't see any problem personally with that type of, of a use. Right now, the ordinance is silent on, on everything having to do with shipping containers, it doesn't, it doesn't expressly address any of it. So we felt like, because it's, because it's a coming trend that we're seeing more and more of, we need to, uh, to take it on and, and figure out what we like and what we don't like. So this is my first attempt to, to try to do that, so, uh, in this table, in this table, going back to where I was, is my attempt to, to explain to the, the public where we would allow, uh, at least in concept, where we would allow it, or whether it would be limited use or conditional use, the, this last one, shipping containers as a temporary use, those are the, those are the pods, the kind of things you see, someone, that they're moving, and they put it out in the front yard, in the driveway, we don't have any desire to limit those. Uh, we, we have limited, we have limited conditions, so that people will know how long, how long they can be out there, but, uh, we don't want to stop people from doing that, that's a typical use of anybody's property, whether they're moving an office or a house, or anything else, so is that, is that clear to you guys, what we're, what we're doing here?
Okay, so if someone wanted to use a shipping container for storage permanently, can they do that or not?
Yes, uh, if there, if there's zone RA one and RR one, absolutely they can do that, uh, and, and the bigger your acreage, the more units you can have out there, as you go to the RR one, then, because those are, those are smaller, usually, they're smaller lots, smaller lots, only like five, ten acres, there's fewer of them, but yeah, you can, you can do that. We, uh, we draw the line at RR one, because with RR one, that's your typical suburban type density, and, uh, I'm living in a subdivision, they're probably not gonna be allowed by the deeds and restrictions, but, uh, but beside that, even if they were allowed, uh, because of the size of the unit, ten, or twelve by, twelve by forty, they take up an enormous amount of space on a property, so, uh, in this first draft anyway, we, that's where, that's where I've drawn the line, we, we can look at that again if we want to, but uh, we felt like it was appropriate in these two districts because of the typical size of, of those lots.
So to have one as a primary use, it requires a permit or does not require a permit?
As a primary use, it would require a conditional use permit, so if, if, if I was gonna come in and build, and build something that looked like that sample image, you guys are, are probably gonna approve it, if it's, if it's gonna be sitting on the middle of twenty acres, uh, I mean, no one would probably eject that, but if someone didn't want to, to, uh, upgrade the container to, uh, make it look like something that belongs in a neighborhood, uh, you may not want to approve those, so you, you look at those on a case-by-case basis.
So that, that's primary use, but accessory use would be like using it for storage?
Right.
And does that require a permit?
Uh, it's a limited use permit, that's a staff, that's a staff approval. So, it doesn't, it wouldn't come before the county commission, or the, or the county commission, it'd be, it's just a building, it's just a, a building permit to, uh, to comply with the conditions, and then to place it on the property. So, in those cases, you can, absolutely you can do those by permit.
So, like, you know how people buy those sheds that sit on the ground, those, do those require a permit too, like a shipping container?
It's a hundred and fifty square feet, yes, they do. But don't, and this, and, and just to draw the, draw the distinction, this category right here is just for the, just for the shipping containers, and not for any other accessory uses, because the containers are a special breed of accessory use, we, we, I chose to do those, um, individually by category and type of use. But, so, tell me when a carport, garage, or a shed, those kind of uses are not, those kinds of just were uses are not, are not governed by these requirements.
Randy, I, I know, I know we're looking at, we're looking at residential and, oh, and I mainly, but I, I have come to know of a, of a, more an industrial, I guess there's this idea that companies can buy shipping containers, take them to people's residences for temporary, for them to load up whatever stuff they wanna store in them, and then take them back to a facility for long-term storage.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, you might get to it, but that might be an option to, uh,
It's actually on here.
I'm sorry?
Say, that's actually on here, on this, on this fifth one, shipping containers temporary use, uh, we have all these Ls, it's allowed everywhere, and it's just for those kind of purposes, if I'm a, if I got one of those pods, or whatever they call them, uh, you know, the Home Depot has one, and uh, we're not, we're not in any way restricting those. Hmm, so I wanna draw the, I wanted to draw the distinction between a temporary use container that's gonna go onto a ship, or a truck, or a, or a, or something else to be shipped, versus someone who's gonna put, put it in their backyard, it's gonna stay forever, uh, possibly, and those people who wanna convert one into a, into the, into a primary use, so you've, you've got three different types, you have, you have accessory use in your backyard, you have a primary use, that's gonna be, that's gonna be in your front yard, it's gonna be in your primary house, or something else you wanna use it for, and you got the temporary use, it's gonna be out there for thirty, forty-five days, and it's gonna go on a truck. So we, we've addressed all three of those, and we also covered the repurposed equipment and other things that are, that are used.
I guess, I guess I was talking about more like the permanent yard that hundred, you know, a hundred shipping containers would sit in as an industrial use.
Oh. If it's an industrial use, those, those are gonna be covered in the industrial use section of the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
So if I'm, if I got a store, if I got a, if I, if I work for a train, if one of the trains, uh, and I, and I got a, I got a shipping yard that, that I load those containers off and on trucks and trains, uh, this is no way for him to step in doing what they do.
Oh, okay, very good.
Okay. Moving into the next, uh, eighteen articles, I'm gonna be really brief here, uh, I'm gonna tell you, first of all, that the development standards in each district, at the height, the height, the setbacks, all those things did not change. That wasn't the purpose of this ordinance, to get into that, into that detail, we might do that at some point in the future, I haven't heard anybody really saying that, uh, that our, that our regulations are onerous, or need to be looked at, or amended, or anything else, so since it's not broken, I didn't feel like we needed to fix anything there, but what I did do is, is by peeling out all of the land uses, we're able to streamline each of the districts into one single page per district, uh, right now, some of the districts have, have a page that looks similar to this, but it's, it's followed by forty-five, fifty, or sixty more land uses that, that follows each one of those, and if you, if you read through those, those land And if you, if you read through those, those land uses, a lot of it is repetition. So this makes a, this, this makes a more streamlined presentation. I just pulled article five, this is, this is RR one, single family. This is pretty much representative for all of them. You look at section five oh two, the use regulations. Basically we say that the, that the regulations are set out in section two oh one, the land use table. So instead of listing all the, all the fifty things that can go in an RR one, we reference land use table and user goes right to that table and figures out what he can do and what he can't do. Everything else on this page is pretty much as is. There's nothing different down here on the, on the cross references to other, other sections or articles of the, of this ordinance. I, I renumbered those to refer to the new, to the new regulation, to the new article number. Uh, those, those were slightly changed a little bit, but otherwise this is pretty much uh, unchanged, this, this streamlined, so a user can get through them all real fast and compare different districts quickly. Article twenty-four, uh, this is the article that you've been working on for the last ten months. Uh, this is all land use tape, the land use tables, the various, the various uses that are allowed in each of the districts. Uh, we do, we do cover every, every use that requires a limited use permit. You'll find a reg, you'll find a regulation in article twenty-four that addresses that. We don't cover every conditional use permit because there's some you just can't write conditions for. You have to look at each, each one of those special ones on a, on a case by case basis. So we cover some, we, we cover many of the, of the more difficult CUP requests, like, like event centers, uh, things of that nature, but we don't cover, if someone wanted to, uh, do something more exotic. Excuse me. For, for certain land uses that just don't minimize themselves to be, be written into a set of, of standards. So I didn't, I didn't try to. If I, if I did that, uh, the ordinance would really be difficult to, uh, to enforce because, uh, every ca, every, every one of those type of cases is a little bit different and, uh, this, this can't be written. We can't take a head or what somebody might, might wanna do with certain uses. So we didn't try. Uh, the thing, the thing just to, just to bring Josh up to, uh, up to speed, since he wasn't here for, for this first part. Uh, the thing that I like about the limited use permits, uh, is that a lot of those, a lot of those uses, but not all of them, a lot of those uses were almost like no brainer type of conditional use permits that were, that, uh, in the past required, required a public hearing and planning commission approval and, and county commission approval. A lot of those were so simple that it made, it made total sense to just write out a bunch of conditions. Like if someone wanna do a daycare, uh, there's always the same, there's always the same eight or nine conditions to use over and over and over again. So rather than make somebody spend seven hundred dollars, go through the process and get everybody stirred up, uh, we figured, uh, let's, let's make those simple ones into limited use permits where they can come in and show their plans to the staff and the staff has the right to approve those. So you have fewer CUPs, uh, the, the cases we see over and over again that, that are, that are difficult, we're not changing those. Those, those, those will continue to go through the, the regular CUP process. But, uh, the, the beauty here is that people do, get their, get their projects approved quicker and we treat everybody equally, uh, with the same kinda uniform regulations and requirements, um, without having to rewrite those every single time for something. Uh, if somebody wants to do a greenhouse in their backyard right now, that requires a CUP. That's an example of something that should not require a CUP. Uh, if you could address it through, uh, through solid regulations, requirements that staff can approve, those should, you don't have to go through a process. So, uh, the planning commission and, and the county commissioner will still have, have control over all the difficulty ups. Those, those, we, we can't make those go away. Again, each one of those is gonna be evaluated on, on a case by case basis. So we're not, we're not changing those. Um, and what I've done, what I've done.
Jolie keeps, I keep getting feedback from Jolie's mic and saying that she's talking, so I don't think she's muted.
Can you mute your mic? Well, since her mic, her mic is muted. Uh, I hear that too. I don't know whose mic that is.
Well, on the little screen where it says talking.
I, I just muted her.
Okay. Okay. Uh, the, the last thing I wanna touch on is, uh, I mentioned this be, before, by, by doing these conditions and spelling them all out and ensures that we treat everybody uniformly and, and that someone, someone doesn't get the, get the, get the, the county discount on reg, on regulations, someone else has to do fifty things. Uh, I wanna treat everybody equally, uh, wherever you happen to live, wherever you are. Uh, so that's, that's the benefit of having all this stuff spelled out. You, you know in advance what the expectations are of the county, you know what, you know, how to address those, those expectations. So with that, with all that said, just an example, this is, this is an example of a couple of things. Uh, this is, you know, you've, you've probably seen all these the last nine or ten months, but, uh, this is the private club class A. The thing I wanted to bring to your attention is that we have, everything that's in blue is a, is a, uh, is a hyperlink. So we, we, by doing this, this brings the county, the county code to the user's attention so that they know how to find things in the county code that would apply to a variety of land uses. Before, most people didn't have any idea that a county code even existed. It's up to the county councilors and, and commissioners. So, uh, this links, this, this is one way to kinda link that, link that together with the zoning ordinance, make them both work for the staff and for the applicant. We've linked in, uh, state, state statutes, well, KSA is a Kansas, Kansas statute, so you can go to forty-one, seven, ten. Uh, if you wanna verify that we're not lying, uh, or want more information, you can go to the state statute, buy more information. We also, in some cases, linked, uh, uh, the, the US code in here too. Uh, somebody, one way back, we, uh, talked about the, about elderly and disabled housing that refers to actual, uh, US code language that, that governs those uses. So if someone wants to build something like that, they can go to the, uh, go to, go to the US statutes and find out where that all comes, comes from and, uh, get more information on what they need to do in order to comply. So, uh, just, we feel like this gives the user a whole lot more information to what they need, need to know in order to comply with something, uh, rather than leaving it to them to figure it out as they go and, and then realize they can't comply with something because it's in a state statute or in a county code or somewhere else. So, um, thought this is more proactive for, uh, all the users. The, uh, private section I spent the most time with is the accessory uses and structures. Again, like I mentioned before, uh, the regulations in here were written for an urban, for an urban environment. That's why you see regulations for, say somebody wants to build a garage or, or a, or a shed. You see the regulations say that the side, that the side walls are limited to sixteen feet and the overall height is limited to twenty feet. Uh, because we only allow flat or low pitched gables. Um, if you're in the county, if you're in the, I mean, you, you can see how that, how that makes sense if you're in the city of Topeka, where you've got a lot of houses that are real close to one another, you, 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 you need to figure out how, how to do things like that by limiting height and, uh, roof pitch. In the county, if you're out there doing something like this, you're, you've either, you've either built one of two things. You've either, you've either built a multi, multi-million dollar house uh, with a, with a large profile, large roof, large gables and, and different things on it. And you're looking to build an accessory building that, that matches it uh, in appearance with a, with the high pitched roof, uh, with the, with the roofline changes with a, with, with gable roofs and other, other kinda roofs, rooflines. Or you're, or you're doing something that's accessory because you've got something that's, that's quasi agricultural. Either case, you, you, you probably need a bigger building than you would if you're in the city of Topeka, cause you're in, cause you're in the county. So this is just one example. We've increased the, the building height to twenty-five to a lot more flexibility and we raised it up to thirty-five feet in the RA one. If I'm building a house like we've talked about last, last month where, uh, you're at the corner of sixty-ninth and, and Auburn. Uh, if you've got a big house, you should have the right to build a bigger, bigger accessory building. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be confined by sixteen feet for a side, for a side wall and, uh, and twenty feet for a height. We've had a lot, we've had a lot of people over the last years since I've been here, uh, getting involved in this building height question. And we've had to make, we've had to use a lot of exceptions in the, in the book and use some common sense. Uh, this just spells it out, uh, and probably does something more in line with what's appropriate with the county. We've also, uh, added dense, dense height exceptions, uh, with somebody is, is permitting, is, uh, is trying to comply with the permit requirements for a state or federal permit or for a safety requirement or a security requirement of the governmental agencies that requires a taller fence. We, uh, we've made it easier for those people to, uh, show us the requirement and say, hey, if I wanna do, if I wanna sell something to the US government involves, involves, uh, defense contracts and I, I, I need a twelve foot tall fence, they shouldn't have to go come in and apply for a variance. If they, if they, they see the, the federal requirement or the state requirement or somebody else's requirement that requires, requires a taller fence, we should be able to, to approve those. So we, we, we've added that exception in there and make that something that can be done without all the headaches. Uh, we talked about the ADUs way back in the past. Uh, you liked, you liked the different ways we're, we're addressing those. The one thing we did, did we, that we did add to the ADU requirements that you haven't seen is we stipulated expressly that a tiny home is not an ADU. Shipping container is not an ADU. Uh, repurpose the equipment is not considered an ADU. So, uh, if, if you wanna build an ADU, it has to be in your basement or attached, attached to your house or, or detached in a separate building. That needs the requirements for the ADU. Uh, it has to be a, a, a building that's built in place. Um, not something you can just roll in and roll out, you know, on a trailer. So we added that to the ADU requirements. Uh, we've also clarified the, the maximum area for accessory uses. Uh, we had that, we had that question last month with the, uh, with the oversized uh, accessory building on Auburn Road. Uh, that was one example of, of, um, some of the issues we have in trying to clarify what, how much, how much area is allowed for accessory uses and how much isn't. Again, um, as you, as you, as you've noted, if they're in an agricultural setting, they should be allowed to have accept, uh, additional accessory building area. So that's what we try to do, uh, and clarify what's, what's allowed, what's not. And last but not least, we added telecom structures to comply with all federal regulations for cable antenna, satellite dishes and other antenna like ham, ham radio. Uh, the, the federal government has done a lot in, in terms of regulations, especially in nineteen ninety-six. So we decided to put all that, we decided to codify all of that. We're not, we're not doing anything less or more than with the federal government files. But we wanted to clarify, so if somebody wants to do a satellite dish or an antenna, they know what they can do, what they can't do. And basically we just, we just parroted, uh, what the, what the federal statutes are, nothing, nothing different there. So, um, again, we spent a lot of time on this section because our section needed a lot of, uh, a lot of work to clerk, to, uh, make it county, county friendly as opposed to the urban friendly. So that's what we did. Special events, article twenty-six, uh, we didn't really do a whole lot in this section. Uh, uh, we, we have special events, one, two and three. Those are unchanged, uh, with the exception of clarifying language that, uh, whether there's some language that, that needed, needed some additional clarification or some additional wording, we did that, but other, otherwise, uh, that's unchanged. And then like I said before, we added the additional requirements for the firework cells and the firework displays and the shipping containers to, uh, to, uh, address each one of those special, special needs. So if someone wanted to do a container for temporary use, there would no, to come back to section, to article twenty-six, section twenty-six ten and then they can find all the, all the information you need to know about the shipping containers or what's allowed, what's not allowed. Uh, this shipping container thing, we, we think is a proactive response to what, what we're seeing nationwide and locally uh, as a, as a trend. Uh, we think it's better to get in front of it and say to, to the public where we allow it, where we don't. So that's why this, this last part of the article, to article twenty-six was added just to, uh, respond to those, those changes. And we saw that before, we can talk about that again. This is another section that, uh, I spent much of time with and the reason why uh, development standards, just so you know what that is, that's, that's buffering. That's buffering, dimensional requirements, off street parking, stacking for drive-ins, loading requirements, screening. Right now, if you look at our zoning ordinance, you'll find some of these regulations all over the ordinance. Uh, they, they aren't all in place. Uh, buffer yards are in some of the zoning districts. Uh, some buffer, some buffer yard requirements are in actual some of the land uses, uh, in various sections of the ordinance and other things pertaining to, to, uh, the screening is in the very back of the ordinance. Uh, the only thing, the only thing right now in the ordinance that, that actually makes sense is the parking, is the parking and, and stacking is all in one place uh, where it needs to be after all the use requirements. So what I've done is I, I gather all those together and then put them all in one section. So if you, if you wanna know about, uh, buffer yards or parking or stacking or loading or screening, you come to one place and you find it, each, each one of these things has, has its own section, actually its own chapter. Within article twenty-seven, it's all spelled out in one, in one location. So you don't, you don't have to play like you're in, in the game of Clue trying to find where these things are at in the ordinance. Uh, a lot of what we have right now didn't, didn't change. It's, it's mainly a one, a one location, but, uh, we did add, we did add for some, uh, some exceptions and options and credits that I think the, the casual user will like. Right now, for example, if, if I'm at the end of a sub-street that's going nowhere, but I own fifty acres at the end of it, I can't develop on that property unless, unless I extend the road and put in, and put in the cul-de-sac at the end of it, which is obviously an expensive proposition to, to pave two hundred feet of, of road to dedicate it to the county and put in, put in the cul-de-sac. As the, and the reason why is because, you know, right now we require two hundred feet of frontage. Uh, and so we, we have a lot of land around the county that's, that's undeveloped because of that. Uh, some of these properties will never be extended. The, the road, just a, their own, the road will not go anywhere because of, because of floodplain or other, other constraints. Or in other cases, it still might go through. But, uh, but it'll be a long, be a long-term proposition. So rather than have people locked up and not being able to use their property, we've added a sub-street frontage exception where you will allow the public works director to look at those properties along with the planning department and, and to either, either put in a temporary turnaround, what, what we call a, a hammerhead where if there's a school bus or a UPS truck or somebody goes down that street, they could actually pull in from the hammerhead and back up through the hammerhead and back out front, going, going forward. Instead of having them back out five hundred feet down a dead end street. So our, our turnarounds in somebody's driveway, which most people don't like. So this gives the, this gives the owner at the end of the road a means to put in the sub-street, uh, turnaround or temporary, or temporary cul-de-sac, use their property today which would not preclude the road from going, from it's being extended. That's at some point in the future, in twenty-three, fifty years, whenever the, whenever the conditions are right for the road to go through. So it keeps the option open and allows somebody to use their property in the short run. Uh, we, we think this is a more efficient land use, I mean, more efficient use of land and it's, it makes more common sense, uh, for, for the day-to-day user. It's, you know, counties take a long time to develop. They don't, they don't develop uh, all in, in a one decade or even half a decade or even, you know, half a century. It takes time for, for the, for the urban development to catch up and, and move out to the hinterland. So we thought this was a fair option. We, we, we have a lot of people who, who get caught in this trap where they can't do something with their property and, uh, this is the way out for them to do something. The buffer yards, we give, we give people more options. Instead of saying, okay, I've got this use next to this residential use. I need a fifteen yard buffer with trees and a wall or something else. This gives them the right to use different design options. If, if they don't have enough land, they can build a wall in lieu of the land. If they have a whole lot of land, they can just put trees in there and have the added, you know, maybe have it, instead of having a wall, they have twenty-five feet of buffer space with trees in it and you, and you don't make them, you know, force them to build a wall. So it gives, it gives the applicant more opportunity. So it gives, gives the applicant more opportunities to go with the flow with what that site can do and what it can't do. So it, it leaves the design to the, to the, to the design professionals. It also gives credits. If you've got a bunch of trees that are already out there, they exist. Uh, we give you credit if you're gonna, if you're gonna preserve a stand of trees, whether they're, they're juniper or. Anything else, if it, if it screens one use from another, uh, we should give you credit for that. And, and if you, if you have that credit, then you don't have to build a buffer yard. You've got, you just, you just say, we're gonna maintain the, maintain the trees as existing and you're done. Uh, and also somebody owns, somebody has a, has a big floodplain area behind their property. Uh, we give credit for natural buffers like uh, stormwater detention park uh, for, for lakes. Or for, for built, for built improvements, like a stormwater detention pond where you've got. You, you've got a, you've got a lake back behind you that, that floods when it rains, when it rains a, a hundred-year event or a ten-year event. So why shouldn't we give you an exemption from the buffer yard? If you're doing that as part of your site work. So, I mean, we also have credits for tree reservations. So uh, we, we try to give a whole lot of options and not just have a one-size-fits-all. All sites should have a ten-foot buffer or a twenty-foot buffer. It just, it doesn't make sense. But if you have certain land uses, like you have a person wants to rezone their property industrial and it's gonna butt up to. To residential. Uh, it does have, it does have higher standards for certain zoning districts when they're adjoining other lower, uh, lower intensive or less intensive land uses. So uh, we think it's more, it's more based. It's more reality-based, based on what the users are and it gives, it gives a designer options and, and all those circumstances. Uh, most developers like having the options uh, and like, and like being able to uh, do something like uh, preserve trees and whatnot to uh. Satisfy their buffer requirements. So that's what we've done. Um, off-street parking, stacking and loading, we didn't really do a whole lot here. In, in terms of um, in terms of parking, uh, what we did do is we included the handicap parking standards. Uh. Most people know, know what those are because it, our, our standard would be the federal standard, but uh. Everybody doesn't know you need to provide a certain number of, of spaces based on the number of parking, parking that you're required to have. For your property. So we just put that here. And we added the, we added the off-street parking graphics for, for the handicap parking spaces and we also improved the. Improved our off-street parking graphics. So you can actually read, you can actually read them and find out what you need to do. Right now, it's kind of uh. Difficult to read through there and, and sort it all out. And uh, we've also added drive-through stacking and loading requirements. Right now, right now is the perfect time to uh. To do the drive-through stacking requirements because we don't have a whole lot of commercial that's right now in county. So, but I'm sure we're gonna, we're gonna have some more uses in the future. So if we got a Starbucks. Uh, or some user like that who has a lot of, of stacking, stacking needs. This will help those, those customers know how to uh, what our, what our, what our expectation is, how to design, design their drive-through windows so that there's enough space. By having, having an ordering window and, and then a pickup window. So people can, can take care of the transaction. At two different, two different windows and keep the transaction uh flowing. So the cars can move up and not, not block the parking lot. People can't back out of their parking places and things of that nature. Uh, I'll skip one. And we also, we also refined the screening regulations and those right, those right now are in the very back of the zoning ordinance. Uh, right now it's out of order. Uh. If you, if you didn't know they were there, you wouldn't know they were there unless you read every page of the zoning ordinance and found those. So we just, we refined those and uh, again, added more options. Now a person could screen their dumpster, their loading area. And, and things of that nature for commercial uses. Again, the, the same thinking with the drive-through is, since we don't have the commercial yet, we know it's coming in the future. Let's get ahead, let's get ahead of the curve and add these kind of requirements in here now so that when, when the businesses come, they'll. They'll uh, do an appropriate design that looks good for the community and for the area that they're located in. Sign regulations. I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time here, other than to tell you, tell you for a fact. That if you look in every city and county across the, across the country. Uh, the list of, of communities that have a two-page sign ordinance is probably like one percent. Of all the population of counties and cities and we're one of them. Uh, there's very little in there. To uh, to tell a person what they need to do for a sign. And our sign regulations are pretty, are pretty uh. Are pretty over the top. It says, if you wanna, if you, if you wanna put in a sign anywhere in town, you can go two hundred feet. And have a height, have a height of five hundred feet. It, it, it doesn't make any, doesn't make any uh allowances for. Low-intensity commercial uses for offices or neighborhood. If, if someone's got a church in the neighborhood. Are they allowed two hundred, are they allowed two hundred square foot sign? Uh, if you look at our zoning ordinance, you can make the case that it, it might be. Uh, so, so what we tried to do uh is. Use a whole lot of common sense and allow somebody on a highway to have a bigger sign. But if you're, if you're in uh, if you're, if you're near a neighborhood, you have, you have lesser, lesser of a sign. That, that's more appropriate for, for the neighborhood. Uh, what we did here is I used uh, the city of Topeka's new sign ordinance, city of Lenexa. Uh, and uh, also used, used uh, Wyandotte County sign regulations. As a, as a guide, as a guide here, since, because they're, they're, they're our neighbors in the city and, and Lenexa, I mean, and uh. And Wyandotte County uh, is also a county situation, but again, I had to tone, tone it down just a little bit. Because they're an urbanized county versus our county, which is uh, not, not so urbanized. Um, as Wyandotte. This is, this is an example of just one page. Uh, this gives, this, this gives you clear definition of what is case, what is, what is a projecting sign. Uh, you see. Three different examples of what, of what a, a projecting sign is. And then by each, by each zoning district. Whether you're in the, in the residential districts, the, the M-two, the O-N-I's, the C-one or two, the C-three and four. And the industrial districts, there's a different requirement. As to the number of, of, number of signs and the number of, and the, and the height, the height in the area in the uh. And the spacing between signs. Uh, this section is, uh, article twenty-eight is still being worked on. I've got a few things left to do. To, to make it complete, but I'm gonna go ahead and probably send it to you tomorrow or Wednesday. With, with what we got so far, just so you can see what it, what it looks like in, in, at this stage. I probably have, probably have it done. By your next meeting in March, I'll be able to send that out to you.
Hey Randy, this is Joni, real quick. Um, did, I don't know, sorry to interrupt. I know you said not to ask questions and stuff, but. Church signs are one of the ones that we've had come up the most in, I mean. That come through our office. And so does this address church signs as well?
Right. If you, if you, if you, like, like, uh, this isn't the best chart to show you. How, how we're doing that, but it, it gives you an example. If you look on, on the top where it says RA-one, RR-one and the rest of those districts. Where it says allowed, that means for non-residential. If you go, you go to the bottom, NR, the sign type is permitted for non-residential uses only. So if I'm a church and an RR-one district and I wanted to do a projecting sign. I'd have ten square feet, the, the size of, the height of the side will be two feet. Uh, the setback is per the zoning district and, and the, and the spacing is ten feet between, between other signs. It's not likely, uh, 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 come a church, I wanna do a projecting sign. But, I mean, I probably wanna do a monument sign or something like that, but this is, but that's an example. Every, every district where those kind of oddball uses that, that, that fit into the residential districts, like the churches and daycares. And other uses where, where you would, where you do allow non-residential uses in the, in a residential area. There's, there is a, a caveat for, for just that use, the NR. It's in everyone, it's in every one of these. Every one of these uh, we, we had this, I, I had this divided out by projecting signs, by wall signs, by canopy signs. By pole signs, pylon signs, uh, subdivision signs. And uh, if, if somebody is a non-residential use in a uh, in a residential district. There is, there is a, an exception for the, for those non-residential uses. So uh, yeah, you're right. Uh, and, and uh, that's one of the things I like about the way Topeka handled that. And also how, how uh, Wyandotte County uh, did it. The attorney, I know the attorney uh, who did the Wyandotte County, I've worked with him on other. On other um, other ordinances in, in my, in, in a former life I had and uh. He was, he, he's very, he was very good at putting, at, at recognizing those kind of conflicts that happen and uh. So that's, that's why I patterned this after what, after his work. Uh, just, just for the reason you mentioned. This, so we have some, we have something to go by. And also, I would also make a, make a point to say uh. And uh, I love churches, I think church, I think public assembly uses are one of them. In the limited use. In the limited use regulations, uh, a lot of those uses specify what, what the sign area is, is limited to. Like if I'm going in the dent center, we call out expressly ten feet. For, for certain kind of signs. So uh, between this and the limited use regulations, uh. I think, I think we've got it covered, but when you, when you see it, I think you'll understand it better. But you see, when you see the whole thing, it's hard for me to. So you all, all nine of these screens uh, in this, in this context, but you're right. And, and I, I try to cover it. By using that method. And everything I wanna point out too is um. Trying to be proactive. It, I don't like try, I don't like trying to dictate taste to anybody like. Uh, say, if, if I wanna do a certain kind of sign, you're limited to. It, it's gotta be all bronze or it's gonna all be this or it'll all be that or something. What I like to do is give incentives for people, for people to do the right, to do the right thing. Uh, you'll see this all throughout this word, throughout this chapter, an article. If you go to the bottom of here on the design characteristics. Halo lit, I, I, I have examples later on this presentation, what, what a halo lit illumination looks like and what channel letters look like. Uh, but we, those are just really good-looking signs. That, this slide behind you, you see on the wall, that's, that's a, that's a channel. That's a channel letter sign as is, as is this, this medallion. Uh, it looked a whole lot classier than, than box and box signs and other kind of signs people have, have used traditionally in the past. So what we've done is, we said, if you, if you use this type. Type of signage, whether it's halo or channel letters, will give you a design bonus. Where we'll, we'll allow the area to increase by uh, either ten, fifteen, twenty percent, you know, what, what, what the type of uh, sign is. If you, if you go to the classier looking design. So rather than be punitive, we're, we're going the other way and giving awards for people to uh. Design signs that look, that look something better than what they've looked in the past. So uh, put the carrot in front of the person if they wanna go for that. They have the right. If he was gonna put the standard sign up, they could do that too. So, that's kind of how we, that's how I put together the sign regulations, give people the option to get a little more, if they do a little more. Uh, administration, article twenty-nine. What we've done in this section, I think Joni will like, because what we've done here is. Rather, rather, if you, if you go through the ordinance right now, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the CUP process, the rezoning process. The PUD process or nearly any other process, the same verbiage is repeated five different times. We've got public hearings repeated over and over. We have the notice requirements repeated over and over. Uh, as an, as an alternative to doing that, what I've done is, within this section. I've, I've set out standardized procedures for application, for noticing, for hearings, for meetings, for staff to process requests. Where every month, it happens the exact same way. So instead of having to repeat. The notice requirements five times in this, in this ordinance, it's in there once. And then was within each of the, within each of the processes under PUD or rezoning, it, it references the requirements in this section. So it's a lot easier. Uh, it shortens the order, it, it shortens the order and it's a lot easier to read and to uh. And to make its way through, but the, but the thing is, it treats the process like a conveyor belt. Uh, think of, think of putting together a car. You do, you do thing one, thing two, thing three, you keep going through the process and the conveyor belt pushes along and you get, you get to the end date. That's what this is set out to do. It standardizes everything um, in one common set of procedures that. Uh, we can write and amend in one setting if we need to them down the road without having to change the ordinance in ten different places. Also, if you look at this, this table here, we, we spelled out each and every process that's in here. And identifies the role of the, of, of each board, the commission or the county commission and the, and the staff. So for example, if I turn in a site plan and I wanna do a site plan appeal. This is an appeal, the purpose is an appeal of the DRC or staff decision to, to deny a site. To, to basically deny a site plan and, and uh, disapprove it. It requires no public hearing. The timing is after a site plan denial. This, this goes through the P and Z of the, the planning commission, BA is you have. This body has action, the one at the end of it. This is a big long table. At, at the bottom of it, this, this note one means if there's an appeal. Of your decision, say you, say you support the staff and deny it also, a person can go to the county commission again and. Uh, appeal your decision as well as the staff decision. Uh, same thing here with a, with the master sign program. If we turn that in, you are the approval authority. And the person that they're turned down by the, by the staff and by the planning commissioner could go to the county commission to uh, appeal your decision. And we've done this for every, every use. It tells you when you need a public hearing, when you don't need a public hearing, tells you when it needs to be done. And who the body is who approves that. And you, you have the cross-references at the end. It, it tell you. Where you can go to find, to find the uh, the full body of the regulations that pertain to each one of these approval types. So this is something you can easily cut and extract and put it on your webpage uh, for, for. People coming in to know how the processes work and who does, who does what when. Uh, it's a good, it's a good piece of uh, material to give out to uh. The casual user of our ordinance and have it all in one, in one tiny little place. So, uh. All that is set out in this, in this article twenty-nine. And again, that shortens by big time the length of your zoning ordinance. Administrative approvals. Uh, there are different things in the ordinance. As, as it exists today, that's, that the staff can approve without having to uh, go to the planning commission or any other board or commission. This, what it, what we've done here is in a nutshell, it uh. It standardizes what that process is. So it, it, it keeps us on track of what we need to do as a staff. How we do it, when we do it, and uh, and the rights of the applicant, uh, of what the criteria is for us to approve or not to approve a request. Uh, there's a lot of missing language in the, in the existing ordinance that needed to be filled in to really make this thing work. And uh, so that's, that's the first part of this. The first two, the first two bullet points. The third bullet point is we're creating a development permit and there's no fee attached to it. Uh, this is so that we know we have compliance with the CUP. Uh, just to give you an example. Uh, in the last, I don't know, how many, how many times in the last fourteen, fifteen months, we have uh. We've looked at CUPs that were approved ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty years ago. And we don't have any evidence, we, we don't have anything in the record to tell us. If the applicant back in nineteen eighty-two or nineteen ninety-seven or ten, even ten years ago complied with all the requirements of the CUP. Uh, you know, you look at it, you look at it, you don't know if the staff signed off and allowed something to happen. Or if they, if a developer or a builder or somebody didn't, didn't do what was required of the CUP. This is, this developer permit is a way for us to make sure that we don't issue a building permit until. Until the zoning administration, administrator or myself have verified that all the CUP requirements and conditions are, are approved. Uh, that's a big deal because you spend a lot of time in the commission, in the county commission, spends a lot of time uh. Imposing these conditions. You need to have some kind of assurance that what you're saying uh, gets done. And this is our, this is the way I put something into the record. We had a permanent record for staff. Forty, fifty years from now and next week to know that in, in twenty twenty-one, somebody did what you, what they were supposed to do before a building permission. This is a big deal for us to be able to do our job effectively. And the last thing that I'll that I'll touch on briefly uh. Is we, I added a section here for for request for reasonable accommodations, this is something that comes out of out of federal statutes. Where it says that if somebody is disabled. Disabled or has a disability, we are required, we are obligated as a as a county. To try to work with that person to find reasonable accommodations to for them to get to get into their property and use their property. So you know, we we have all these setback requirements, uh this is, this is one example. If I'm a, if I'm a handicap individual and I need to, I need to to build a ramp. To get up to my property so that, because my house sits up on, is on a, is on a crawl space. The peers and need to get up to it, and you go and build a ramp, and and that ramp's gonna be partially into a side yard setback. It allows the staff to follow certain criteria and be able to to uh. Follow the criteria and and grant reasonable accommodations per per state and federal codes that apply to this. Uh we are required to do this, whether whether it's written in our ordinance or not. Uh I I think it's better to 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 put it, put it in writing, uh basically echo what the what the federal requirements are and uh. Create a process for how we go through those things. Uh so this is a way where they can do, where they can use their property without having to go through a result, go go through a variance process and. Uh because it's really hard to meet, it's really hard to to meet the hardship criteria, and they shouldn't have to meet the hardship criteria. If you have a disability, they should be able to tell you, tell us that they do, and we figure out a way how to how to help the individual. So uh that's, that would now be in this ordinance and uh needs to be in there. Text and map amendments, I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time on this section, uh we didn't really change much of anything uh. The only thing we did was that we we did include that uh that amendments for the comprehensive plan are 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 handled in the same way. As any other text amendment. Uh mainly mainly you see this, the a map amendment is is your zoning map. The text amendment is usually uh an amendment or an update to your zoning ordinance. Uh but we also, we also wanted to throw in comprehensive plan in there because uh that is something that this body and the and the county commission also can periodically. Amend to update your, update your plan as necessary. The last thing I want to touch on right here is something that's uh. That's in current zoning regulations, but it was not fleshed out. It says, it, I can't remember the exact language, but it says that if you apply for for a zoning. You 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 send out all your notice for zoning, it's to say you're a, you're somebody who wanted to uh. Reson your property, you own twenty acres, forty acres, and you want to rezonate the M to M two. Right now, where the ordinance is written, uh excuse me, go back, if you're in M two. And you want to revise your application. You can't, without going with without applying for, but we with without. Without uh preparing you notice and sending it out to everybody who's affected, the zoning ordinance has written. Said. It said that uh they were lit, that they, the way it was written, they wanted to to come back in the future and. And add a table, add a table to that section where it said, which in which cases you would not have to do additional notice. So let's go back to my example, say I was M two, and everybody was violently opposed to it. Uh as a, as an, as uh as an applicant, I had the right to downs, to downzone my application. So say I I I hear, I hear all the arguments and the gripes, and I see the pitchforks, and I wanted to want to say, okay. I'm gonna amend my application to M one A, M one R one, R one. If I did that in the meeting, where it says the, where it's where the green shaded in, is I would not require, I would not require me, you notice. Since you asked for M two, if you're you're to downzone it, you can do that without having to send out, send out new notice. You cannot, you cannot, any any district upzone your your request, if you uh. If you hear they don't like M two, you can't go to O one I one without sending out new notices, so you, so that person will need to continue the request. Send out new notice uh and start again brand new. So that that same kind of philosophy goes all through this chart, if I'm a. I'm asking for I one zoning, I can downzone it, my 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 application to any one of these commercial districts and so on through here. So that's something that uh doesn't doesn't happen very often, but it periodically does, and uh. It's something that the original authors of the of the current zoning ordinance wanted to have in in here, so we, I fleshed it out, did this. PUDs and construction use permits, didn't change much here, this adds some cross references and uh. Uh reference other sections of the ordinance like Article twenty nine for the processes and procedures, notice, all that kind of stuff. Uh mainly was it was this clarif- clarifying language. Appeals and variances, special exceptions, again, the same thing here, uh cross references to Article twenty nine. Uh I added some more verbiage to special exceptions, since right now the current ordinance doesn't say much of anything about special exceptions, what the process procedures are. So I added that to this, to uh fill out this section. Nonconformities, this is something I'm sure Johnny will want to go through uh in detail. What I did is I didn't try to reinvent the wheel, uh I mean, we can, we start, we start back one one step. If you look at our orbits right today, the only thing it addresses in there is nonconforming uses. Doesn't say anything about nonconforming signs, parking, landscaping, screening. Uh there's a whole, there's a whole lot of things that could be nonconforming that aren't addressed in the in the uh, in anybody's, anybody's zoning ordinance. And right now, our ordinance is silent on all that kind of stuff. So what I did was basically, instead of reinvent the wheel. Uh I've worked with different companies that have, that have created ordinances for other other communities in Kansas. Uh and other parts of the country, so rather than reinvent the wheel, what I did was I I used other adopted regulations that were drafted by. By bona fide attorneys, not planners, but uh by attorneys and 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 other Kansas jurisdictions. And uh I coordinated on this, I I I mentioned, I mentioned to uh the county counselor that I was gonna do this, and he said. If he concurred, that there's not, not a need to be creative and innovative, just just make sure these regulations are the latest, greatest. That if they reflect the latest ways thinking of how cities are handling, cities and counties are handling nonconformities, excuse me, I need to get some water. So I fleshed this out, and uh it will now include signs, lots. Uh lot sizes, parking lots, buffering, screening, and all the rest. So it's more, it's more complete. Interpretation, enforcement, and legal status in uh Article thirty six. Again, the same, the same uh type of, thank you, when in this section, this is very legalese. I um I shamelessly stole from from the, from the work, from the regulations of other cities who and counties who are doing it well. Uh use boilerplate language, again, drafted by by attorneys from other Kansas jurisdictions. There's a whole lot, there's a whole lot of new stuff you need to put in here about severability. Uh this is something that is unconstitutional, especially for signs, uh because the Supreme Court made a landmark decision. Think in twenty fifteen or sixteen uh. Uh about about sign content, so uh there's special language you need to put in here that that addresses severability for. Your zoning ordinance in general and for signs in particular. Um so that's that's in here, and uh it clarifies how conflicting county, state, and federal requirements are to be addressed. It's a lot of stuff that only attorneys and planners care about. Johnny, what I'm sure will will be looking at this uh in detail. Again, we're not trying, we're not trying to invent any language, trying to use good standard uh. Practical language that attorneys have drafted as as the basis. Definitions, last, last section. Every land use in the zoning ordinance is is defined, you won't see, you won't find one that's not. All the, all the land, all of the uh, all the general terms and the sign ordinance terms are all defined, are all also defined. Anything that, anything in this ordinance that I saw that I saw was used more than a, used more than a couple of times, it either appears. On our list of acronyms, or it appears here in a definition. Uh this section of definitions is divided into three parts. Uh land use definitions come first, general terms come second, and then the sign terms come third. Uh we did it this way, it makes it easier for us to go through the ordinance and just find the land uses. Without having to look through all all the other terms of general and sign terms. And uh the sign terms were kept as one because, because they're all, they're all very unique and uh. It's easier for the user to just see the sign term separated from all the other requirements, instead of being interspersed. Throughout everything else that's in here. The other thing we did in this section was all of the, if you looked in the, in our current definitions, there are actually some development. There are also, there are some development requirements that are actually, that actually appear in the definitions. That's kind of a taboo, you don't want to do that, so those requirements were were ripped out of the definition and put into other places in the zoning ordinance where they belong. And uh not, you won't find that in the in the definition anymore. So, oh, and then the last thing, I told you I was gonna, I I told you that I was gonna show you how. How all of the land use, all the land uses we have currently in the zoning ordinance, we're gonna be incorporated into the definitions, so. If you were, you remember, we we shortened, we shortened and compressed the list of land uses. And uh I mentioned that we we use some, we use all the, all the current uses as sample uses, so here's what, here's what that looks like, so you understand what that meant. So you look at general retail. The the definition is simple, it means a business or retail center that provides goods and personal services to several nearby neighborhoods. Then uh then it asks that, it says sample uses include, and then there's a big long list of sample uses. All those uses appear in the current zoning ordinance, so if you were used to looking at our ordinance and finding. Finding household appliances, leather goods, uh tattoo cars and any of that kind of stuff. You would come to general retail, find the definition, and all those uses are still in the ordinance, they're just put in, they're put in a in a more compressed. List like this, as sample uses of what the, of what the term general retail means. That helps the staff, and it makes, it makes the uh people who have used the ordinance previously, the last thirty-eight years. Comfortable in that they can find all those uses here spelled out in the definition, same thing with with neighborhood retail. Just to distinguish neighborhood and general retail, this means this, the neighborhood is, it's a small scale and light intensity business and service. Provides goods and services for the day-to-day living needs of an immediate neighborhood, such as shops. Sell antiques, and there's a definitely, here's your sample use of this, sell antiques, books, magazines, stationery, et cetera. So you'll find this, you'll find this exact same kind of setup throughout all the definitions where we had a, we had a whole list of of. Thousands of definitions, we we put them in here like this, as sample uses. And this is another example of something we've we've done in the definitions, under the, under the signs. You remember before I talked, I talked to you about halo signs and and channel letter signs. Since most people, most people don't know what a channel letter sign is, uh we put an example up, so if you. This is how the design bonus works, if you want to put up a sign that looks like this, which is, which is very, very attractive, it's uh. It's uh. It's as big as any other box sign, somebody will want to use, but if you, if you do something like this, we're gonna, we're gonna give you a design bonus for it. So uh we use this so people understand what a channel letter sign is, we have a sep- we have a separate one for what a halo sign is. Basically, it's backlit, where all you see a- at night is the, is the light around the outline of each of the letters, so it's it's less light intensive. Uh that's why I call it halo, it's like a ghost, uh very easy on the eye, very attractive and very visible to the public. And uh feather signs is is another example, we want to ensure everybody understands what these signs look like, what they're, what they're referencing. So we have, we we put the images in here with some of these definitions, especially in the sign, in the sign regulations. Definitions, so that's, that's your overview, uh what are the next steps, you ask? We're gonna provide, provide you and the county counselor and the county commission a copy of the presentation that I just went through. And the initial draft of the zoning regulations, when I completed them later, later this week. And this is, and that's just, I call it the initial draft, knowing that it's gonna, it's gonna change, the county commissioners are gonna weigh in, you're gonna weigh in. Uh the county council is gonna weigh in and things are gonna change, uh this is just the starting point. Of how we begin the next part of the process of re- of refining what I've done. Each body will begin to review the draft regulations and provide staff with a list of questions, comments, and concerns. This will probably, for the, for the, for this commission, it'll probably take two meetings at least to go through this. Uh they, depending on how much, oh, depending on how much, what happened there. Depending on how much we need to change, uh you know, we 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 might take three months going through this part of the process. Don't know until we start getting into it, but uh you get the first cut. Uh and a command, so you'll have, you'll have workshops to refine the draft. And while you're doing that, I'll make a presentation to each of the county commissioners. To explain what we've gone through, what what uh to explain what I just uh went through with you. And see if they wanna, if you want to present this to the full commission in an open meeting as a, as a work session or some other way. So uh we'll let them weigh in on how they want this to proceed, on what, on what the approval process needs to look like. And uh that'll obviously involve, involve the county council, so uh. That'll go through the, that'll go through their review, and uh I want them to weigh in on some of the, on some of the more. Innovative things that are in here, like, like ADUs, tiny homes, shipping containers, and some of the rest that are, that are. That are some of the unique things, if we don't want to have ADUs or tiny homes or shipping containers, uh or some other things that are in here. That I I have a list with all those are, that are, that are very unique, uh we'll let them weigh in and tell us. Leave it in, cut it out, or leave it in for now, and maybe we'll, maybe we'll cut it out later when we hear from the public. Uh so if if there's something they don't, if there's something they don't want, there's no point in going forward with it. So this is, this will be the first cut of any of the content uh that they don't feel like needs to be in our ordinance, they can cut. And and after we go through all that process, that'll give us a public hearing draft for public review, comment, and hearings and uh. And for that part of the process, as we closer, closer to it, we'll obviously weigh in with the uh with the county counselor and figure out. What the process needs to be, how many hearings, how many workshops and whatnot, what we want to go through. So that's the uh, this is a quick overview of the end game of how we get from the draft. The initial draft to a final, to a final public hearing draft, to possibly one we might be able to approve later this year. So um I said a lot, uh apologize for all that, but. This is my, this is my quick way to give you, give you a a picture of the whole thing. And tomorrow I'll send it to you uh this full presentation, so you can go back to it and refer to it, and then you'll get the whole ordinance, you'll be able to look more detail. What I'm talking about, as you work through each one of these articles and see how it is and how they all fit together. And uh we definitely welcome your comments, and we promise this is not the final drafts, this is just the beginning. Uh and a lot of what's in here reflects your work on the first twenty-six or twenty-five articles. Uh so you're, so so most of the first twenty-six or twenty-five articles, you've seen before, it's not, it's not too much new in there. Uh but it's just the last ten, and see how the definitions work together with the other sections of the ordinance, so uh. With that, I'll turn it back over to the chairman.
I think you're on mute, Brian.
Thank you, Randy, I forgot that I was uh muted there, I gotta click the button. Uh look forward to seeing the whole thing, it's, I was wondering if we were gonna get a copy of it tonight or. So that's good to hear, we'll get it later this week. Um I guess we don't, do we have any non-agenda related, I mean, any other topics?
Well, I wasn't, I wanted to mention one thing to you, uh the, this is, this has nothing to do with this with this ordinance, this graph. This is in general, the uh, the county commission. Uh began having in-person meetings today at the at the Great Oval and Station, so uh. Uh began having in-person meetings today at the at the Great Oval Station, so uh. This might be the last Zoom meeting we have, I mean, it's still possible, things can change. But at least next month, we're hoping that uh that the the numbers keep trending good and that we can hopefully meet you all again at the. At the Great Oval and Train Station, so uh. So look for your, look for your uh, I mean, Joe Lee will let you know where it's going to be, and you'll get notice of it all, so you you won't be wondering wondering on Monday afternoon, where am I going? So we'll let you know.
Do we know if there's any uh planning and zoning items?
Yeah, we know there's uh, there's three things on the agenda.
Okay.
And because of that, we may not be able to do to do a workshop. About about this, about the about this new uh zoning ordinance, so uh we'll play by ear, if we can do something, we'll try to do a little bit, if not. I like to keep it, you know, hour and a half max meeting, uh just for everybody's mental health.
Okay. All right, if there.
We also have the.
Yeah.
We also have the subdivision plot too, Randy.
That's in March?
Yeah, that's for March.
Okay. Yes, none of these, none of those items in March are are particularly challenging. But uh there's enough there where you'll where you'll probably fill out a meeting.
Okay.
A full hour, hour, hour and a half.
Okay. Sounds like we got it covered. I will uh entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Josh.
A motion to adjourn made by Josh, I'll second. I guess let's do roll call vote.
Brian Robert.
Yes.
Chad Depper Schmidt.
Yes.
Josh Greening.
Yes.
Jeanette Johnson.
Yes.
Janie Muller, Tyler Timbrink.
Yes.